Let's.
Five o'clock.
Now can I open the meeting?
Yes.
But our meeting is now open.
Okay.
Make a motion to uh. Table the uh minutes.
Before we do that, before we do that TJ, could you just send, make the general announcement that the meeting is being recorded?
Oh, I'm sorry, the uh meeting is being reported twice. Okay. Uh make a motion to uh. Table the uh September fifteenth uh minutes for the board and the executive session.
Second one?
Yeah, okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Yay. Did you vote yes? Yes. Well. Okay, uh part my report for Christina.
Hello, so uh last week was a bit of a busy week, we had uh. The mission clean energy people come on Tuesday. And they gave a presentation to town members that were interested in coming in and hearing them. Um Thursday, we had our hazard mitigation plan meeting with PVPC. Uh we've set a date for our public meeting and our follow up before the public meeting actually to go over the. The plan that's in place so far. Um I also had a meeting on Thursday with um John Cadwell from Eversource, he was our. Area community representative, um and he was introducing us to his replacement. Her name's Leslie, um it was an interesting meeting, he was, he's a very nice guy, but it wasn't, didn't give us. Too much, I mean, it was sort of informal, just an introduction to Leslie. Uh. On Thursday, September eleventh, I met with David Johnson, he is the Conservation Commission Chair. Uh. For. Why is it escaping me? I'm so sorry, Beckett, yes, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Um and he wanted to just talk about the things that Beckett is seeing and wondering if we're experiencing the same things and really at the end of the day, the answer to that was yes, we're kind of all in the same boat and. Uh we just kind of went back and forth with some of the things that we're seeing and we had agreed that we would stay in touch and and go over things and any new information that comes up, we certainly will share it with one another. Uh I also had a meeting on September eleventh with Melissa. His last name, I cannot pronounce correctly, so I'm not going to, but she is the new superintendent of Gateway Regional Schools, Dave, do you remember how to say her last name?
No.
Citrix is updated.
That's okay, leave it, so fine, no, that's okay, that's for radar, that's good, that's a good thing. Um so she is the new uh superintendent for Gateway, she seems very lovely, qualified. Uh and she will be joining us eh at a select board meeting on October sixth.
Yeah.
To introduce herself to the select board and the community and there. I believe for now, that's it for me.
Okay, moving forward to action items. Uh review the warrant for the special town meeting. Okay, yeah, guys are all.
So the first three articles have no financial aspects to them.
Correct.
Uh I decided as moderator, it was gonna vote. A secret ballot, so that the clerks have got the ballots all ready to go.
Okay.
So I'm just going to announce at the beginning. Mary.
You're gonna do secret ballot for all three of them?
Of four, yes.
Or and the four, okay.
So article one, I mean, the first three articles are non-binding reference questions, so it's whatever the vote happens to be.
Yeah, they're essentially to provide guidance to the select board and uh. Uh they're very closely interrelated, we discussed at one point whether to combine them into one article, but uh they do have. Nuances to them, so you know, they 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 can stand alone, uh I imagine the debate is going to be very similar, I don't know, Mr. Moderator, if you would entertain discussion. When when article one comes up, discussion about the other articles as well, uh how you how you would separate the discussion, that's completely up to you, but it's. It's it's hard to. It it, the the scope of those three is so is so interrelated. So I I don't know how you intend to navigate, or if you're just going to let it go on article one, two, three and let it go.
Given the fact that these are three separate.
Yeah.
Activities and there's more than one in some of those activities that we would go on each the independently.
Oh, I agree with that, I think that what I'm really.
And and I will direct people to make their comments to the article.
I just wonder what, how much latitude you'll give people because I.
Well, I'm gonna give them three minutes, so.
Well, that, well, that helps, that helps, cause always we could be here a long time.
Because under under Massachusetts law, the moderator can set a timeline for speakers, so.
That's fair, I think you should announce that upfront.
I'm going to announce that along, uh as well as my usual, we start as neighbors, one and as neighbors.
Yeah, right.
And I.
Right.
Um so article one, two, and three are 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 simple. Wow, yeah, we'll see how simple they are when we get on floor.
Simple majority.
Um article four is is has a financial cost to it, so I don't know what the finance committee is. Is thinking about this or what the select board is thinking about that, we have no free cash, because free cash was decertified at the beginning of fiscal year. So it has to be from raising appropriately to transfer some whatever stabilization.
And why can't it be free cash?
Cause free cash is not certified.
It's not available.
So free cash is certified usually sometime in October, November, it lasts until the end of that fiscal year, so they certify free cash fiscal twenty five. Which is what we used at this annual town meeting. It's now fiscal twenty six, free cash is not available until the DOR certifies that, which will be sometime in October, November.
We do need a funding source.
So. Eight hundred thousand would have to.
Raise inappropriate.
Would probably best be raised inappropriate because we don't have any funds set aside specifically in in. This is not an emergency, this is not.
No, well, we want to reserve fund and really stabilization, I think, you know, raise inappropriate, we don't have the tax rate set yet, obviously, so you could do it, just being mindful that uh. Uh when when we're doing other matters, this will impact setting the tax rate. But you know, as long as we have money available in that regard.
And so our.
So we have money available and the reserves were at forty thousand back in April.
No, this is.
So now, raise inappropriate, it's taxation, it's a tax, tax, tax rates, right, so we're not gonna, not gonna look at taking from stabilization reserve. Cause we don't have the money in reserve. So tax rates, we're gonna try to certify the tax rate sometime in October, so this is still for October first, so it can be in raising appropriate, yes, um we do have. Enough excess levy capacity to handle all the articles on this warrant, I think our excess levy capacity is somewhere around seven hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the total of this is like two hundred eighty eight, so. We're welcome.
Yeah, that was my my biggest point, is just making sure we're within the tax levy.
So like, can we talk about this for a second, so I understand a little bit more? Is that when you raise it, if we don't use the whole two hundred thousand, you're still raising and appropriating two hundred thousand, so that 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 to me sounds. Strange, right, why, because we may not use it all, we may use fifty thousand.
Right, well, you you can, you can raise it appropriate, the motion could be less than the two hundred thousand if you want to do that tonight. Uh if you raise it already two hundred thousand, that's that's authorization, obligation, you don't have to spend all of that money, however, you've tied up that chunk of money. And so at a future town meeting, you have to rescind that authorization or free it up, because you'll have tied it up for, but un- until it's spent.
You know, and again, this is new for me, so the can you raise and appropriate for this warrant? And then when the free cash does become available, go back and rescind that and make it free cash.
Too late.
It's too late. Could we, sorry, hey, I have a question, um could we change the amount tonight to raise an appropriate, like some, a small number to get started, like ten thousand? And then um if we feel like we'll need more, we've been talking, we have to do another special town meeting, um probably. Novemberish anyways, for a few other items, can we do something then taking from free cash?
It'll be too late in November to raise an appropriate, the tax rate will be set.
No, I know, I'm saying that way we could take it from free cash instead of raising inappropriate.
If free cash is certified by that date, you could do that, the other thing, you could do it, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, you could raise an appropriate two hundred thousand dollars to be sent this fiscal year.
Yeah.
In which case, at the end of the fiscal year, if you not spend that money, it automatically rolls into free cash, which would then be available, so you wouldn't have.
I would just rather it not affect taxes.
Right.
Well.
Possible.
Well, it's gonna affect taxes no matter what, because if you take it from free cash in November, you will have that free cash offset. Funding opportunities in May or June.
But Kara, if you're, and and we should, we should announce that Kara Latandra has joined the meeting remotely, um thank you Kara, um eh eh. Under this article, you certainly can appropriate less.
Right.
That's the 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 two hundred thousand is the maximum within the scope of the the article, so if you're looking to raise an appropriate or impact taxes at this particular juncture for less. And obviously, we could have another special town meeting before the tax rate is set, we've got, we've got time, uh hopefully, we won't be doing that, but uh it's always a possibility. But you know, your your options are somewhat limited, we have to appro, we don't have, well, we don't actually have to do anything, but uh. If if we're going to move forward, you have to appropriate a certain sum of money and we have to come up within the scope of the article, and we have to come up with a funding source, right now, unless you want to uh. You want to appropriate a smaller amount of money and transfer it from some other available fund. It seems like you're you're looking at taxation and now you just have to determine what motion is going to be made, is it going to be two hundred thousand or a lesser amount and where it's gonna come from?
And you can't take it out of stabilization, is what you're saying.
How much we have in stabilization?
No.
I think she said forty thousand, forty thousand.
No.
No, that was.
We have two different stabilization.
Yeah, but you have stabilization funds for particular things, you can take this.
Yeah, we don't.
Educational stable fund, because it has nothing.
Yeah.
General stabilization fund too, what's it, what's that for? Has that been, that's not been.
I don't think we have a general, do we?
I'm pretty sure.
I'm pretty sure we do.
Yes.
But.
And there's.
Irrespective.
Know what's in there right at the moment.
If you take money out of stabilization funds and something comes up, you no longer have that cushion.
Understood, I I guess.
If you raise, if you raise and appropriate, whatever the amount and and. Given your timeframe for trying to do this, you really want to raise and appropriate a small amount of ten thousand dollars, which something we burn through and about.
I think.
Three hours?
I think Dave, I think the moderator's suggestion of uh, you know, raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred thousand dollars, said some to be uh expended within fiscal twenty twenty six. Um then, you know, then it, then it did es- essentially self self resolving uh with the end of the year, whatever's unspent. Um as was said, that that would, that would go back into free cash, so that that might be the, that that or a lesser amount, again, and I do think.
I'd be, you know, I mean, just to, cause um just thinking through what's going on right now and uh with the fact that. Um we've got people, these boards are all just tapped to the point where we're gonna lose people on these boards if we don't get them some more support, that's how bad it is. So the funds we're supposed to be for, if we need those funds to bring in specialists for planning or specialists for. Uh or let's say an engineer to review some of these major projects that are going on, a third party engineer, we would wanna push that back on these vendors for them to pay it. But we may not have that time.
When you say push that back on the vendors to pay it, I don't know.
If you have a vendor that's in here doing, you know, the solar vendors or the best vendors or whatever, and they're. Um moving forward, you know, we've got timelines, we gotta meet, and they're moving forward, and we choose to have an outside engineer come in and review. Let's say the best containers is an example, that's gonna cost money, we should be able to push that cost back on the vendors.
Only under, only under certain circumstances.
Well, only under certain cir- circumstances, but if they don't do it, then we have to pay them.
Right, right.
Correct?
Under.
And what I can see, those run around sixteen thousand to twenty thousand dollars to do, so we've got BES, we've got big solar field. Eversource, we're not gonna hire an engineer for that, but those are just two.
Right.
The third thing is that when we had our town meeting, one of um. A gentleman got up and spoke about our water system not being efficient enough to be able to help, should there be an emergency. To me, we need to spend money on having somebody come in and say, what are the deficiencies of the water system, should there be a fire? That's money that, you know, when you start adding all those up, right, you got, that's at least a hundred thousand right there.
Which is why I would suggest that you probably leave it at two hundred thousand. Put an end date that it's only spent fiscal twenty six, so that it it rolls into free cash, it was not spent. But then you don't have to worry about waiting for a company to approve an engineering plan, you do that yourself. Um you can always try to get that reimbursed, but that's at least with this, the town can move forward getting.
Exactly, Dave.
Legal and and engineering expertise.
The decision, the decision right now, though, is just the dollar, you've got to decide.
I'm I'm articulating so people understand that this is just some arbitrary number.
Right, but that's, that articulation is out there.
Okay, oh, really?
Yeah, because.
Sorry.
Yeah, no, like.
We'll give it two hundred thousand.
And and everybody's okay with sunsetting a so two hundred thousand dollars for the.
To be spent within fiscal twenty seven.
Because again, that timeframe still gives us another most, but.
But again, in twenty seven, we could do this again.
Yeah.
It's. Let's hope not.
Sorry, Karen.
The only interesting thing, you know, if I could just share is that this is a one-time event, it's not like it's ongoing, where you have to continually tax while you have this. Um, yeah, well, let's hope that we don't become.
But i- if you raise and appropriate this, and then some of it rolls into free cash.
True.
When, when, when you redo your budget for fiscal twenty seven.
Yeah.
Your tax rate will go down, because you will have to, again, raise two hundred thousand of this.
Yeah, that's fair.
So that's.
Okay.
You know, and and is it a cost yet, for the average household debt amount is about two hundred twenty eight dollars on the tax bill?
Okay, thank you. You got it, I just wanted, I didn't know that this wasn't the place to.
No, no, it's not that, it's not.
Oh, it it's great to discuss it, but there's people who are gonna vote on it or any other.
Right, right, we're just, we're just looking for a a motion.
Yeah.
So you're okay with that? As much as you can.
Yes.
Not, not you.
Got it.
See, I get no vote anyway, so.
I'm sorry, Kevin.
We do.
Um full-time assistant treasurer collector, I.
Or do we, do we wanna take a a a vote on that motion, or do you want to, we we were proposing a motion?
Sure.
For that, for that particular article, so the motion that uh for article four, uh the the two hundred thousand dollars be taken from taxation. Uh with a with a sunset provision to be expended within fiscal year twenty twenty six.
So would we see the town both raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred thousand to be expended in a direction of the select board within fiscal year twenty six, two thousand twenty six, the final.
I second that, it's not believable.
Okay.
I'm still learning the rules. Okay.
So we have a second.
We make the motion to uh.
To prove the article is read by the moderator.
Article is read by the moderator.
I second that.
Favor.
Well, we, we, because Kara, because Kara's a reboot, we have to do a roll call.
Okay.
Okay, Kara? Hello?
Yes.
Yes.
Kara says yes.
Right.
Got it.
Kara said yes.
Thanks.
Thank you, Kara. Thanks for giving on that chat.
Yeah, it's on here.
You definitely said yes.
Yes.
Um so article five, I assume that's both the raise and appropriate, that's gonna be an ongoing cost.
Yep.
And that's in addition to the treasurer, we already have. Yeah. So we're creating a new.
Well, so there used to be, I don't, I'm sure you probably remember, there used to be somebody in that office onsite and that position never got fully. When that person left, they never put somebody in that position, and so we've been operating sort of making do, kind of going through, um and it's just getting to be. A bit of an issue, somebody needs to be in there, yeah.
But this sounds like a full-time position, is that correct?
Yes, it is full-time.
It says it right during the war.
It was before, dude.
Yeah, it's intended to be full-time.
Everybody's forgetting, cause it's been so long.
Yeah.
How long has it been? Eh, a year, maybe going up, pushing a year, maybe not quite that long, I mean, Karen, Karen, yeah.
No, even before that.
She went over a year.
Yeah, it might be.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
What happened, because there wasn't anybody in the position, no one discussed it during budget period, so we didn't get it in the budget.
It's still represented in the budget, there's just no funding for it.
Part of it.
That's what a budget's all about.
Oh, can't hire anybody without money. Okay.
All right, and article six, which is full-time water superintendent, I would guess that's coming from water department revenue?
Yeah.
That's in hopes of. Yes.
Is that available, we know?
Jackie, you said that there was enough, there's enough market revenue in the, in the budget.
Can they retain, so just move it from from water retained earnings?
Oh, we don't have retained earnings, they don't have that much money in retained earnings.
Where, so where is?
So this.
Where is it coming?
So this is, this.
They made it.
This is coming from per year revenue. So when they're. Water department.
That's what, yeah, oh, not retained earnings.
Retained earnings.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Retainer, I think the water department ended up with like six thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah, I also, I I.
Money for this year.
Yeah, retainer, different thing, right?
So, how's that reading that?
Yeah. I didn't know somebody was gonna ask me where we're gonna get the bu, which bucket it's gonna come from, right?
We always, we have, we have to have funding sources.
Well, there's funding sources, I just don't remember which one it is.
Well.
Well, we did have a water superintendent before.
It's either gonna come from raising, from taxation or from water revenues, usually it was a water department, there's there, as enterprise founder, there's self-funding.
Yeah.
So it should come from.
To fund from water ruben. Water revenue?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
I was like, do you hear me, handwriting it in there?
I'll look at you.
Based on the numbers coming through, they're not in the red, it was more, the issue was that they were not. There's a whole different financial challenge.
Yeah, let's help them.
Is there a water person represent, there to represent or no?
No.
No.
I don't know if there'll be one in the, after meeting, at the meeting.
Maybe we should, um Christina, do you wanna text Brad and uh Steve and see if anyone's around, planning on being there?
Sure.
Thanks.
They're gonna say they don't have their final numbers from the county department.
Of course, they always do.
So article seven's transfer, and that's gonna require two-thirds vote?
No, that's simple majority.
Even if it's last fiscal, prior fiscal year?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, this is, this actually requires a nine-tenth, right, yeah, I wasn't even. We're still stuck in article six, yeah. This is a special town meeting, it's a nine-tenth vote, hopefully, majority, I mean, hopefully, unanimous.
And what is the select board's desire in article two, I mean eight, in terms of raise and appropriate or transfer?
Funds for the twenty thousand?
Yeah.
For the equipment for the.
For here, the gymnasium, and then the necessary upgrades that were suggested to the gymnasium for continued large meetings in there.
Well, again, I thought it would come from the general stabilization fund.
Well, she applies.
This, I suppose it just might end, it could come from building stabilizations.
There is money.
There is.
Yes.
So, again, it's, that's.
No, I know.
Kara, this was sort of um one of the articles that you were most interested in, not that you've been interested in all of them, but uh the suggestion of this came from you, did you have any input as to where you would like to see the funding come from?
I had thought that free cash was gonna be available, but this was sort of pushed by people that were very upset that we weren't able to offer. Um Zoom and all that technology that they wanted for that large meeting, um so. I don't know, is the building stabilization supposed to be for the fire department, or is that for any building?
No, general.
No, it's a general building stabilization fund.
And there's money in there to pay.
Yes.
So.
It's not huge.
Then let's take it from the building.
Um.
Just, just.
I mean, I would.
Give you an idea?
Take it from there, but again, this is, has to be, yeah.
If you raise inappropriate, that's an average of twenty four dollars on a tax bill.
Yeah, I don't, I would prefer not to, I mean, this is, I'm, this is coming from people requesting, so if if they want. I I mean, I don't, I don't personally think it's a hundred percent necessary, um this is coming from the demand from people. And the thoughts that we are being less than transparent, so.
You have one biased committee member and three select board members here, where do you wanna take it from?
Building stabilization.
I would agree, if it, I mean, if it passes, it might not even pass, if people aren't interested in spending money on it, then maybe they don't want it.
So the magic about taking it from the building stabilization funds from our area is that, under the current legislation, that's now simple majority votes, because that's a special stabilization. They changed the law.
So what is that, can you say that again?
Yes, it requires a simple majority transfer from stable, for special purpose stabilization.
It used to be a two-thirds.
Two.
It's still two-thirds if it's not.
If it's just a rate, if it's a general stabilization fund, like. Tricky. So.
Other questions on the warrant? You got.
Um, Mark, I was just, oh, I was just gonna ask Mark before the first four, will you just explain to people again what non-binding is and?
It's, I mean, do you wanna do, you would want me to do?
No, let's let, you could earn your dollars tonight, help that.
Thank you.
Yeah, you already did.
I don't mind doing that.
Thank you.
Truth ain't Karen.
Can I ask one more clerk?
Yes.
Three, what you're saying then, cause she was under the same impression that free cash would be available, so what you're saying is for a three-month period out of the year, free cash is not available to the town?
Until it's certified, it's not available.
But.
It.
Right, you know what I mean, no, you're, because, like, for example, I'll give you an example, they could go four months, if you go five months and not get it certified, and so for those five months, you don't have any free cash that you can use.
Correct. So.
That's the norm, right?
The earliest that it's usually certified is sometime in mid-October, which is three and a half months after the close of fiscal year.
Yeah.
The latest I've seen it certified is actually in January. So you could be more than halfway through fiscal year before they certify free cash.
And then you only have the other half of the year to spend it before we're in a new fiscal year.
Correct, but that becomes more of an issue and was an issue in Blanford fifteen years ago when there was no stabilization. So you have, you have just stabilization funds, you have reserve funds, which fifteen years ago, TJ, we had no money, we were negative free cash.
Right.
And we were negative free cash for a number of years, so you couldn't even count free cash to fill you out. Financial situation, so.
Right.
It's, we, we're in a much better situation in terms of funding.
Which based it, better for us to understand for planning these types of events that, you know, if we wanna use free cash, we're gonna have to push it out until it's certified. Okay.
Now, ju- just a, just a question, going through my feeble mind here. Toward the end of the fiscal year, all right, uh you have two hundred thousand dollars in free cash. So at the end, what happens to that free cash? Does it go into a stabilization of fund or?
So.
What what happens to what's flowing?
So what we did this year is we voted from free cash money into stabilization, so that you have that available for that time period. If you don't vote it out of free cash, that free cash essentially rolls into the following year's free cash.
And then it has to be certified again.
Five, six months.
Yeah.
Or.
Can't.
It has to be recertified.
Because what they have to do, what they have to do.
Hey, Jay. It 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 actually makes sense, if if you really think about, that's why a lot of towns have like a a fall town meeting, so you do everything upfront from uh.
Yeah.
Raise and appropriate from taxation or from from some of the other funds depending on what's there, and then it's at the end of the year, when when the, when the uh free cash gets certified, that's when you, when you realize what you have left. And you spend that, it's really intended to organize your thinking on on the use of. Your thinking on, on the use of of town funds, it, it kinda does make sense to do.
Because what happens is, free cash is essentially the money difference between what you budgeted for and what you spent.
Yeah, what you actually, yeah, right.
So whatever you don't spend on it at free cash rolls into the next year's free cash, but they can't certify it till October, November because. They need all of our numbers, see, what was our actual budget, what was our actual expenses?
Right.
So they can certify what the difference is that then adds to the.
And they give you actual numbers when you found left.
Where they're ready, but it's tiny.
Would, would it be who was to say? A month before the end of the fiscal year? To take a portion of that and put it into a stabilization, stabilization. Until we have it.
Yeah, yeah, I think. We've been doing that, yeah.
Okay.
That's a, that's good, that's good practice, yeah, and we have, most towns do do that.
There was a lot of money, no.
No.
But there were, there was. Can't remember what the number was, it was almost a thousand that we put for free cash in the various. Well, what's he had left over from this year?
Right.
Well, we, we've been, we've been averaging five or six hundred thousand.
Yeah, yeah, and we haven't scored anything like that, but a big, big, big thing.
Bigger towns wind up with bigger amounts of free cash, it's just the way it works out, depends on how much money, how much money you. Appropriated at the beginning of the year, and again, you gotta remember, but like we were just talking about this two hundred thousand dollars, your appropriations are. They're sort of estimates or guestimates, like the best, best, you know, best estimate of what a particular budget requires. And at the end of the year, uh, and people say, oh, you, you over appropriated, it's, it, it's, it, that's, that I think is unfair, it's really. That you've, you've used your best judgment to determine what each apartment, what each expenditure requires, but then there's, there's always gonna be. A little bit left, not always, but very often, a little bit left, and that's, that's what becomes your free cash.
Because remember, the only thing you can overspend is anonymous, right?
Right.
That's the only thing that that state allows you to overspend.
And they changed that, too, that was, that used to be a weird loss. You know, with how, you know, what you did the last year and how you.
Yeah, you couldn't go backwards. Alright, so any other questions about warrant articles in times meeting?
No, we've gotten me thoroughly confused, I'm happy.
Oh, good, and we did, we did our job.
We'll try to get all our, we'll try to get all our paperwork into the state by mid October.
And how long do they sit on them?
Um, it depends on if everyone gets all their tax documents in in time and fashion. Because we have a D O R rep for Blanford, but he's also D O R rep for a lot of other small towns, so if everybody gets all their paperwork at the same time. Then it takes longer, if we're the first ones to get it in, then we're the first ones to get our tax rates set.
Oh, unlikely.
Yeah, unlikely.
Can't give up already, we got a month.
Well, and the reality is, it really doesn't make a whole lot of difference as long as we get the tax rate set. Before the end of the year so that we can actually send out actual tax bills for the last three days.
Right, good point.
But otherwise, if you don't, you can't collect taxes until what?
While you continue to collect out your estimated.
Yeah.
But then you'll, but then what happens is if your tax rate goes up. And I think if your tax rate goes up and you, you're still collecting the estimate and your estimate was too low, that last fourth quarter bill is huge and people say.
Yeah.
So the closer you can estimate what your tax rate's gonna be, so the closer your estimates are to what they actually are, the less people complain, so this year we were pretty close. We only had like a handful of, of, um, abatement forms, even people filed, so. Which you have a lot more, if you say it was gonna be two thousand and ends up being four thousand, it can really.
Understandable.
We all get angry, not me.
Yeah, but now I'm the one getting your anger.
Oh, yes.
Understandable.
So shall we move on?
Review warrant, number six accounts payable, wire payments. That's a lot of money.
Is it? So in there is the audit, you're gonna see, there's a, yeah, so it's, it's gonna look larger than normal because we're paying for our audit. And also mass mifein bill, which is a standard bill, but it's on this one, okay.
So to pay, which is the N F M S, was, was this previous? We just thought, well, to pay it or?
You should, should take a look, pick a gander.
Whether you want to or not.
Okay. Three dollars fifty cents.
I'll look at that one, I'll look at this one.
Broadband really tosses to the brain.
Make a motion to. To approve, pardon, motion to approve, mo- motion to approve. The uh, warrant for accounts payable and wired payments.
I second that, Kara.
Hello, Kara used to with us?
She's taking it off mute.
Yeah, sorry, I was muted, um, yes.
Okay.
Kara says yes.
Any discussion?
No.
Kara?
Kara?
Yes.
Yes.
PJ, yes. For warrant number six payroll for payment.
Can you table that?
Table it?
I don't have it yet.
Okay.
I'll keep you busy tomorrow.
Motion to tables, uh, article number six payroll for payment.
I second that.
All in favor?
Kara.
Kara.
I.
Kara.
Thank you.
PJ, yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Okay.
Chips, chips, I could use.
Chip was on the agenda last week and he couldn't come, I have not heard from him, but I wanted to put it on just in case, he's not here, so I guess we table it again and I'll wait to.
And he thinks the meeting that's, is that six, not five?
Okay. I'll catch him next week.
And uh, word of assessors appointment for.
Michaela, I spelled your name wrong.
Michaela, you wanna come on down? You can sit wherever you're comfortable.
Okay.
That's where she was.
Well, the second most comfortable, I guess. Keep it warm.
I'm sorry, Kara said, Kara said she.
That's okay, I know, I, well, anyway, hello.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Are you nervous?
Should I be? Sorry, I, I mean, you're already working and stuff, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I like it.
It's good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
Blanking curve, but it's good, yeah, I like it.
Are they treating you okay?
Yeah, I think so.
Oh, all right.
What made you decide that this is what you wanted to do?
Well, I'm finishing up my last year of um, school, so I'm going for my T P A at the end, third of the summer. So, um, and I live right across the street, so that. So, hey, it was just sort of location and it worked out and I worked with uh, Joanne's daughter at Starbucks, so I just sort of. I don't know, I have a lot of connections, I suppose. And it just worked out, and it goes along with my degree, so it's really nice, good.
Oh, that's great.
Good experience, yeah. You too.
And you already had your degree?
No, I'm working on it, so, my, my last year, yeah.
Oh, great.
So I'm, this summer I should be able to, yeah.
Well, I think that you'll learn a tremendous amount, that's for sure. Are you?
Yeah.
Yeah. I've been doing a headlight with all this stuff that's.
A little bit, but it's okay, if it wasn't that way, I feel like that would be more of a surprise. Good to learn things, good to keep changing and.
Welcome, it's nice to meet you, you know, at least when we meet each other in the hallway, we know.
I agree. I might still do that, though, so.
And we appreciate your interest.
Joining us.
Yeah, of course, and always feel free, you know, to ask anybody questions.
You may not have the answers, but you're.
As you can tell. But it's terrific meeting you, do you have any questions?
We already approved the appointment.
Right. Yeah, uh, no, I don't think so.
That's true.
Yes.
That's for the assessors.
Yes.
What, you appointed?
Yes.
So, I mean, this is just an introduction.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, welcome, Michaela, thank you so much. Stay through for me.
Yeah.
I'm learning a lot too, baby.
Okay, and then uh, item C on new business is the Henry Knox recommend color card.
Yeah.
Don't do the American Revolution must get the blue for Jethro Jones. Um, make a motion to allow that.
I second that, Kara.
Um, are we discussing or are we um, voting?
Just voting.
You could discuss it, yeah.
No, I just, I was waiting for, I was just waiting for someone to say all in favor, and then I was gonna say aye.
Is, is there a date and time or any, any information that you wanted to provide?
Uh, it's mostly what, October eleventh?
This is Mary Hall from Hall for his products, they already inserted the Jethro Jones marker.
Yes.
Yeah.
You have to get permission from the town to do the salute.
I think at one o'clock.
So, motion to approve?
Yes.
Yes, Kara said yes, so. Motion back.
PJ said yes, Jackie said yes.
Yep.
And Kara said yes.
Yes. And I said, yeah. And I guess that's it. Does anybody have anything?
Anything, uh, any questions, right?
Public comment.
Public comment, sure. When is the fiscal year, when did it end?
It ends June thirtieth.
It's July, July first to June thirty.
Thank you.
Motion, close the meeting.
Five forty three, Kara.
Five forty three.
Motion, close the meeting, Kara.
Kara say yes?
Sure, yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Good thing you're here, Mark.
For my next act.